Good evening, Planning Policy Commission. Tonight, I'd like to call the June 2 Planning Policy Commission's special meeting to order, and it currently is 6:30 PM. Due to the virtual format of today's meeting, I'd like to start providing some guidelines all of you have heard once or twice. We're going to have participants attending by computer and others who may be attending by phone. For all meeting attendees who wish to speak, please speak clearly and pause frequently. See what I did there? State your name each time before speaking. Mute your microphone when you're not speaking. And if you're having any technical issues, try joining the meeting using a different device such as a smartphone or tablet. Use the call-in information in the meeting invite to call into the meeting if you're meeting by phone. Attendance Stephen, could you please call Rolt tonight?
Yes. Commissioner Lewis?
Here.
Commissioner Monahan?
Here.
Commissioner Milligan?
Here.
Commissioner Bader?
Here.
Commissioner Voice?
Here.
And Kelly is excused for tonight. Chair, you have-
All right, thank you, Stephen. Excellent. Now, this part of the agenda is for our general public comment. They're a serious part of the process, and they do factor into the decisions we make here. For the members of the public who are joining us, welcome. And if there is anyone in the meeting now who would like to make public comments, please raise your hand. To do this, if you're on a phone, please press 3. And if you have joined by computer or smartphone, look for the hand icon, and this does vary by device. When recognized, please unmute your microphone, state your name, speak clearly, and pause frequently, limit your comments to five minutes or less, and then mute your microphone when you're finished. If you do not respond, or for some reason your connection is lost, the meeting will need to proceed. You're encouraged to rejoin the meeting if you are able. Stephen, do we have anyone tonight signed up for public comment?
No one signed up prior to the meeting, and I'm not seeing any additional members of the public on the attendee list. So I do not see any public comment for tonight.
All right, thank you, Stephen. The next item on the agenda is training. Training for all of us. And tonight, Tisha will be presenting our city training, so I hand it over to Tisha.
Hi, everybody. Give me just a minute here, and I'll get my trusty PowerPoint going. See, you're seeing my notes. Let me change that. Oh, are you still seeing my notes? You are. Oh, interesting. My trusty trick isn't working. Try it one more time. Oh goodness, okay. Well, you're just going to get a preview. Did that fix it?
That fixed it.
Okay, I don't know what I did, but we'll take it. All right, well, I want to start by thanking you. I know from viewing our website calendar and monitoring our board and commission agendas that you have been meeting a lot on some really in-depth topics, and I just continue to be so impressed by the level of volunteerism we have in our community, and just want to thank you for dedicating so many of your evenings to helping us plan for a brighter future in Issaquah. And I know you're veterans on the commission, so this material is material you've gone over before. We provide this Open Public Meetings Act and Public Records Act training every year to all of our board and commission members. We think it's important, and it helps protect you, so you're informed about some of the expectations around your role. And then tonight, we also have Anne Marie Soto from the Madrona Law Group, which is the city's contracted law firm, and she's going to cover a portion of tonight's training. So we're going to go over that required Public Records Act and Open Public Meetings Act training, and then we'll go into a couple other topics that are shown here. And again, because you have all served on the committee for some time, we'll touch on things lightly, and then if you have questions, just raise your hand or indicate in the chat, Stephen or Chair, please feel free to interrupt and let us know if you have questions along the way. So I'll get started. So the first part of this training is to just provide your refresher on the Washington State, we call them the Sunshine Laws, that the intention of these two laws, the Open Public Meetings Act and the Public Records Act, are just to ensure transparency and access to government. And so we'll touch on both of these. As I mentioned, we provide this training to all of the city's boards and commissions annually, but particularly new members, but we actually like to give all members just a quick refresher, because there are some impacts if we don't abide by these open government laws. So we feel it's important to keep you educated and just free from gray area. So a primary focus of the Open Public Meetings Act is that this thought that the public is entitled to hear discussion pertaining to city business by our governing body, the council, and the city's advisory boards. And so we go to efforts to publish all your meeting agendas in advance during the time of COVID and virtual meetings. We've been publishing all of the information to join your meetings via WebEx, and when you return to in-person meetings, the doors will be open, so anyone is able to come. And again, we provide advance notice, typically at least three days' notice of your meeting, date, time, and location. You have your regular meetings, which are twice monthly. Stephen caught a typo in the presentation. At 6:30 PM is your standard meeting time. In your standard meeting location is the council chambers, but of course during COVID, we've continued to meet virtually. You've got your first in-person meeting coming up here in July, and we'll talk about that in just a minute. Just something to note that we bring up is that anytime you meet at a different time, place, location, it's considered a special meeting. And there are some restrictions for special meetings, which are just that you're limited to discussing and taking action on items on your meeting agenda. So there's not the ability to sort of talk about or take action on something that's not on your agenda, and that's unique for special meetings, even though I know most of our boards and commissions follow their agendas pretty consistently, no matter what the type of meeting. But something we like to make you aware of, and we take special care when we're preparing your special meeting agendas to make sure they're comprehensive. You've had a lot of joint meetings lately, so this is just a reminder here that meetings can look different depending on the format. But as I mentioned, we provide your agendas in advance, so people know where to attend, how to attend, how to comment. And then we also prepare minutes and just ensure that access to the materials and the action that you take. Also, public comment is taken at all of your regular meetings, and we'll have some discussion on that under your rules and regulations tonight. And that is something that's strongly encouraged, though not required, by the Open Public Meetings Act. There are a few reasons by which you can have a closed session that does not occur frequently at PPC. You just mention it so that if there is a situation where we ask you to go into a closed session, you know that that is legitimate, but there are a lot of rules around when and how we do that. So we will give you a heads up if this needs to occur. And again, there's particular reasons, like litigation or certain actions that can be more sensitive that typically are handled by our city council. So we're going to touch on a quorum real quick. So a quorum of the Planning Policy Commission is four members. So it's just a number to be mindful of. One of the things, two of the things I'd like to mention here are, the goal of the Open Public Meetings Act is we want any discussions you have as a group to be public and available for anyone to hear. So it means we need to work to avoid any of those discussion or actions outside of a meeting. However, travel, gathering, social gatherings, a social barbecue, getting together again for a purely social event where you're talking about families, or kind of a get-to-know-you activity outside of the meeting is perfectly fine. We do not need to publish an agenda for that. You just need to monitor your conversations. But we do ask that you not attend events pertaining to business to come before the PPC as a group, and I don't think that's likely to happen. We do have some boards that participate in a lot of more regional topical events, so we just ask you to think about that. If there's a community or regional event that the commission's made aware of, that we would ask you to avoid having four of you there. Again, I don't think that's highly likely to occur, but something to be aware of, and Stephen and your staff will remind you of if there's an event coming up, to avoid that quorum. The other thing I want to mention here is serial meeting. This is when you inadvertently kind of get some collective input from a total of four commissioners. The way this can happen is through email, forwarding an email with thoughts, responding to an email, then forwarding it to another commissioner who might reply and include another commissioner, and eventually there might be a string of input on a topic that totals four commissioners. And we want to really avoid that, which is why we really encourage you, if you have email, have an email you'd like to share with a commission, that you do so through Stephen or one of your other liaisons. It just really protects you from avoiding that situation of inadvertently or advertently collecting input from multiple commissioners. It's also helpful from a public records perspective. We'll talk about that in a minute. The string meeting also pertains to discussion. So while it's totally appropriate to talk to one or two of your commissioners to see how they're feeling about an issue, it wouldn't be appropriate to talk to one or two commissioners and then talk to a third commissioner and relay everything you heard from the first two with the third. You've now got four of you kind of talking outside a meeting. So those are the things we want you to be mindful of and aware of. If you have questions now or in the future, you can let the clerk's office or Stephen know, and we can help provide advice. There are some personal penalties here that are shown on the screen. So we just want to make you aware of those. All right, so let's talk about the Public Records Act. I just have one slide here and just a couple points to touch on. Again, I know you've all heard this before in some form or fashion. So the city clerk is the designated public records officer. The clerk's office responds to all our public disclosure requests, so sure you're aware as a government agency, almost all of our records need to be made available to the public, and so anyone can request any record from us, and we are obligated to provide it with some certain exemptions for privacy, and certain particular records we can exempt. What this means is that your records that are produced within the purview of your role as a commissioner could be requested, and if so, we would reach out to you to see if you had any records that were responsive to the request. By and large, you're mostly dealing with city records, right? We produce an agenda, we send it to you, that contains all of your information. When you're emailing, like I mentioned, that's why we encourage you to copy or work through city staff, because those messages are all captured in our city systems. What we might ask you for, though, are emails between you and a member of the public or you and another commissioner that never went through the city system. For that reason, we recommend that you have a separate email account to keep things just really neat and tidy. So if we needed to request records from you, it'd be very easy for you to identify those or search those, and it wouldn't implicate a personal email account. You know, the other option is to just remain highly organized with your personal email so that you could easily identify those messages. But again, it's definitely cleaner if they're all together and not intermixed with other unrelated email. If you have questions about this, please raise your hand and let me know. I know Anne Marie can also speak to this topic. So as I mentioned, keep your records organized. If you keep notes or things related to your work, your time on the commission, those notes you take are considered transitory records, so you can dispose of those after the meeting, or a month or year from the meeting. The city doesn't need them. If you have them and you haven't disposed of them and we get a records request, we would reach out to you and ask you if you had any notes and would ask for them. So we encourage sort of a routine of disposing of those notes, so that if we reach out to you, you're not having to pull out binders full of content. So encourage just routine disposal of notes once they're no longer needed. And the last bullet here, there's just a legal obligation to search, so you're our partners in providing responses to requests that might pertain to the commission's work. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Anne Marie to talk a little bit about ethics.
All right, good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for being here this evening. I'm going to just be going over a couple really quick slides regarding the city's code of ethics. So the code of ethics really covers things such as conflicts of interest, gifts and gratuities, like what you can and cannot accept, and political activity that you might be engaged in, what is and what is not allowed. The policy and the guidelines for the city's code of ethics are available on the city's website, but these things really, they really help to reinforce the importance of things such as the Open Public Meetings Act and public records requirements. Next slide. All right, this is part of your responsibilities as commission members. You also have to sign the online acknowledgement form. You can get to that form through this link that's included in this PowerPoint.
All right, Anne Marie, I think it's back to me already. You have more to come. And again, I'm just going to touch on this really lightly here, but we have a few slides, just as some reminders about the role of commission members. So we're going to quickly cover these three things. And I'm so sorry, I have an interrupter here. Excuse me. So sorry, I'm single-parenting tonight. So, okay, so we're going to talk about attendance, which during COVID, this has been a real benefit to the virtual meetings. I think it's made attendance much, much easier. We will talk in just a minute about the return to in-person meetings, and we do sort of want to remind and encourage you to use your excused absences. So if you're unwell, if you have planned travel, we are at this time going to be requiring board and commission members to attend meetings in person. And so this function of providing city staff notice of your planned travel and anticipated excused absences is important. For planning purposes and to ensure we have a quorum, we know you're also going to have unplanned absences, and just do your best to provide as much advance notice as you can to staff. Again, we encourage five-day advance notice, but realize that is just not always possible. The city's been working on plans for return to in-person meetings. So the governor had a sort of very longstanding proclamation prohibiting in-person, requiring virtual meetings and making the in-person element optional. That proclamation was terminated yesterday. However, the state legislature had some foresight to amend the Open Public Meetings Act during this last legislative session, and they carved out a provision allowing for all remote meetings during a state of emergency if necessary to ensure reasonable safety. I'm not quoting that exactly correctly, but basically it gives local agencies an opportunity while the COVID emergency is in place to continue to have all virtual meetings. But the city's working towards bringing all the boards and commissions back in person. The city council's been operating in person since March. However, we will be continuing to offer a virtual component for members of the public, and on occasion, some of your presenters as well. So your first meeting in July is July 14th, so we will have, barring any, this all could change. We're trying to be flexible here with COVID case counts and whatnot. So stay tuned, but our current plans are to bring you back in person on July 14th, and you will be seated at the dais. You can certainly choose to wear a mask if you would like to, and get back into that whole in-person meeting dynamic. So wanted to take a moment to mention that. Again, if you have any questions, let me know or let Stephen know. And then, I think I'm going to roll past this section on alternates. It's something we like to highlight, where the city's a little unique in having alternates, so we always like to clarify how that works. I understand you have a few vacancies right now, so pretty much everyone's serving as a regular member at all times. So I'm going to move past this. I also know you're very familiar with your meeting agendas, so I'm going to move on down to Anne Marie's section here.
All right. Tisha just wanted to give me more time, since I only got like 10 seconds the last time. So we'll just jump right into public hearings. All right, next slide. So there are two types of public hearings that you'll see. There are the legislative public hearings. That's when you're trying to obtain input on legislative policy matters. And then you have quasi-judicial public hearings, and that's when you're going to be essentially the decider of the rights of specific identified parties, typically with respect to like a land use application. So what you're going to be seeing most frequently are the legislative public hearings. So this is where you're acting like a legislator. You are making decisions that will affect the community as a whole, not any specific identified parties. When you're having legislative public hearings, there is a requirement for notice to the public, and also a reasonable opportunity for members of the public to be heard. The type of notice that's required is typically set out by statute or in your city's code. And then the notice has to describe what it is that you're going to be doing. So what is the action that's going to be under consideration by the commission, so that it gives members of the public enough notice as to what you're going to be talking about, so that they can have an informed opportunity to provide a comment on that topic. So what does that really mean? What is that opportunity to be heard? So all members of the public have to be allowed an opportunity to speak, and that's whether it can be in writing or it can be orally, depending on the certain situation. You are allowed to have reasonable rules for how you accept that public testimony. There can be things that are really dealing with the time, place, and the manner of how that testimony can be provided. So you can provide things like time limits or codes of conduct for members of the public when they're giving their public comment. But when you do have those rules, you should say those at the very beginning of the public hearing, so that everybody understands what the rules are, what the boundaries are for that public comment. So typically, when you're dealing with your legislative hearings, you're going to have decision criteria. And again, that's going to be either outlined in statute or in the city's municipal code. Most of the stuff that you're going to be dealing with is going to be outlined within the IMC. If there isn't any set criteria, then you can use policy judgment as to how to decide on that particular matter that's before the commission. You're not really limited to just that testimony and the documents, however, that are presented during the hearing. You can still obtain other information to help to inform your decision. The next type of public hearing are quasi-judicial hearings. These are not as common with the PPC as they are with, for example, the Development Commission, but it is still something that you will encounter from time to time, so it's important to make sure that you understand what the role is when you are acting in a quasi-judicial capacity. So here, you're really acting like a judge. So it's just like you're a court. You're holding the hearing so that you can gather evidence, and then you're making findings that are based on the evidence as provided in that hearing. You're really going to be looking at the criteria that's outlined, again, in statute or in code, and then applying the facts and the evidence that's been provided to the criteria so that you can then make a decision. And these, again, as I explained earlier, these are decisions that affect the rights of specific people, the applicant of whatever the matter is before the commission, rather than the public as a whole. All right, so when you have quasi-judicial matters before you, again, you are going to have rules of procedure that are going to guide how you are undertaking that particular matter. In the absence of rules, then you should work out a procedure in advance. There are times where there are going to be special circumstances, and so you have to come up with rules that are going to apply to that particular matter. When you do that, again, you want to make sure that you announce what those rules are at the outset of the hearing, so that everybody understands what the rules are that are going to apply for the penancy of that particular matter. The party with the burden of proof will be the party that goes first, and then the other parties, such as city staff, members of the public, opponents of the project, they then get a chance to present their evidence and their side. And then, again, the person who has the burden of proof, they get a chance to rebut anything that was raised by the opponents of the project. And then commissioners get the opportunity to ask questions during the hearing to help you to make your decision. When you have quasi-judicial matters that are before you, then the appearance of fairness will apply. What that means is that the proceedings have to be fair, and they have to appear fair. So there's a test to determine whether or not the appearance of fairness has been implicated, and that's whether a fair-minded person observing the proceedings and having essentially no part in the proceedings would be able to conclude that the proceedings were fair. So this is a reasonable disinterested person standard. The focus is ultimately on the decision-maker's relationship with the persons who are affected by the decision. So this basically means that if you have like a special relationship, it's a friend or a family member, or it's a business partner, your employer, if you stand to benefit or someone that you have a close relationship stands to benefit from the decision, then you may be precluded from hearing the matter under the appearance of fairness. The appearance of fairness also prohibits ex parte communications regarding the matter with the proponents and opponents of the project. What that means is you can't have, outside of the hearing, conversations with, for example, the applicant of the project or with neighbors who are against a project. Those are discussions that need to occur in the public hearing. However, if those discussions do occur, there's still an opportunity to remedy any ex parte communications by disclosing the content of the communication on the record and allowing others an opportunity to object to the commissioner's continued involvement in the matter based on that particular communication. Which I guess I already covered this. So that's, again, that's how you cure those appearance of fairness issues, is again, by disclosing the content of communication and then giving people an opportunity to object. One thing to note, however, is if you have so many people recusing themselves that you don't have a quorum anymore, then the rule of necessity might come into play, where you may allow people to continue to serve in capacity as commissioner if that would mean that there won't be enough people to have a quorum to hear the particular matter. So when you're dealing with those quasi-judicial decisions, the deliberations can occur immediately following the hearing, or they can happen at a later date. Really, that is- Really, that is going to depend on the timing. The commissioners either might want time to digest the information or they, there might just not be enough time in that particular evening. You know, it's close to 10 o'clock or, you know, it's later than that. And you want to just save it until another time. The decisions, just like the other matters that we already talked about, have to be based on criteria that's in your code. And the decision must be based on the record. So on the things like the testimony and the evidence that is provided in the context of the, the hearing and not by doing research on your own, having conversations outside of the hearing. Those are the things that are prohibited. So finally, we'll talk about legal challenges to decisions of the city. So when you're dealing with legal challenges, you have to make sure that procedural due process has been followed. Again, parties have to be given adequate notice and a meaningful opportunity to be heard. And you have to follow those procedures that are outlined in the municipal code or in statute. There's also, next slide, yeah, sorry. There's also substantive due process. And that's where you need to make sure that the legislation is serving legitimate public purpose and that it's not arbitrary or irrational. So when we're dealing with land use decisions, any challenges to land use decisions are heard through the procedures outlined in state law under the Land Use Petition Act. Land use decisions can be appealed to the Superior Court under the Land Use Petition Act or LUPA, as it's referred to shorthand. The court will then review whether the decision was supported by substantial evidence in the record, with the whether it was based on an erroneous interpretation of an ordinance or other law, whether it was based on clearly an erroneous application of the law to the facts, whether it was based on procedural error that was not harmless, whether it was outside of the jurisdiction of that particular decision maker or whether it violates the constitutional rights of any party. And if so, then the decision may be overturned. And the review is based on the record that has been prepared by the jurisdiction and no new evidence is taken. So at the outset of a LUPA, the, the jurisdiction will prepare the record that was used for the decision maker to make their decision. All right, and it looks like we made it to the end. And so here's both mine and Tisha's contact information.
All right, Chair, that concludes our presentation.
Well, thank you, Tisha and Anne Marie. I appreciate the presentation. It doesn't appear that we have any questions because your presentation is so thorough. And possibly because we have heard it once or twice. Thank you both very much. We appreciate you guys coming here tonight and helping to educate us. All right, so now we move on to topic number four, which is the adoption of the commission's rules and regulations. And what I'm kind of thinking and hoping that somebody out there will agree with me is possibly making a motion to approve the rules and regulations. And then as we move through the topics, because there's some that we don't even have action required unless we want to. And then we can possibly, because I believe there's eight amendments. If there's any deliberation or contention, then on those particular, particular topics, we can open it up for discussion, debate, make a motion, and then vote. So it might be just a cleaner and easier way to go about this just by opening it up, making that motion, and then starting to have Stephen present for us.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to adopt the replacement rules as presented in the materials with the minor changes received from the commission.
We have a second.
Sure, I'll second it. Nina Milligan.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Milligan. Thank you, Commissioner Monahan, Vice Chair Monahan. Stephen, I believe you are up for the presentation of the amendments to our rules and regs.
Great, thank you. Can you let me know if you see my presentation? Perfect. So tonight I'm going to talk about the, the replacement rules and regulation amendments. Several I received from commissioners and several were proposed, or at least brought up by staff in the material memo. So just really quickly, the overview of the replacement regulate or the replacement rules is that it's, it's regularly updated to incorporate best practices that are reviewed and approved by the city clerk as well as the city attorney. And then it also maintains consistency with how the other boards and commissions adopt their own rules and regulations and maintains our own consistency as, as a commission in terms of how we operate. The replacement rules came from the draft or were drafted from the Development Commission's latest rules and regulations, which were adopted last year. The major, the biggest changes that we added to our own rules and regulations came, came with the addition of the public hearings. And then I, we added in minor commissioner edits, which didn't change any intent or any of the context of a lot of the language that were presented in the materials. But if the commission would like to see those, let me know once I run through each of the amendments. So tonight we have six amendments that we'll be this going through and discussing. As Chair Voice had kind of indicated, we're going to go through each one with each of the options with the ideas that you would either go with option one, which is keep as presented in the materials, which requires no action. But if there's a motion to make a change, and that's what the commission would actually discuss and then vote on for each of the amendments. So Chair Voice, I hand it over to you for the first item, which is just confirmation of the meeting dates and time.
All right. Well. I believe for the first one, the meeting confirmation, that is our typical regular meetings at 6:30. I guess it'd be city chambers, but currently virtual. And I believe we have two options. So option one is to keep that, what we've always known, or option two is to change. Is there any motion to change it? So this is where, like I said, I'm, I'm still got a little bit of learning curve. I guess hearing none, we move along. I'm looking at you, Matt. That's a good one. Hearing none, we move along.
Exactly.
Okay, appreciate it.
Silence is consent.
Silence is consent, okay.
For the first amendment, it's to determine kind of the length of public comment. This is something that's presented at, most of the boards and commissions consider when they update their rules and regulations. And so the first option that was presented in the memo was consideration of keeping it the same, which is five minutes when we have public comment or consideration to changing the length of public comment to three minutes, three minutes, which is consistent with a change that the transportation advisory board made for their rules and regulations. And I'm happy to answer any questions on these, Chair Voice.
Does anyone have any questions on? All right, looks like we're going to stick with five minutes, option one. Hearing none.
Okay, moving on to amendment two. So the second amendment is the move of the public comment on the agenda. Originally in our current rules and regulations, comment, public comment is actually identified at the end of the agenda. I think based on conversations we've had with commissioners, the preference is to have public comment at the beginning. So that is what's actually presented in the replacement rules that was presented to the commission. So I had it over you to, to you, Chair Voice.
All right, so speaking to amendment two, the public comment on the agenda, whether it should be before the agenda or at the end. Does anyone have any questions? Any motions?
Chair Voice, it looks like there's a question from Commissioner Lewis.
So, and no problem at all. I, my chat for some reason isn't working because I don't have everyone. I just have host and then the commissioners alone, but I can't, I can't see anything in my chat screen.
So I can, I can track the chat, Chair Voice.
Okay, okay. Please, Commissioner Lewis.
Thank you, Chair Voice. What I want to clarify is because we actually had a change of procedure recently. So I want to make sure what this does is this actually just addresses a separate agenda item of public comment in addition to public comments that we're taking if we're obviously having public comment for whatever our agenda items are. So this would actually be a double, in a, in a meeting where we have public comment, there would actually be two spaces for public comment. Is that correct, Stephen?
No, this is just, so I, I should clarify from what was in the memo. We identified kind of the three different options of having public comment at the beginning, having public comment at the end, or having public comment after every topic. This is kind of addressing the first one, which is, do we have public comment identified on our agendas at the beginning of the agendas versus at the end? And then in the next amendment is discussion on, do we have it after every topic? Does that help answer your question?
That is my question. Thank you. That's why, thank you for breaking that up into two. That's what I wanted to make sure we were talking about.
Yeah, in discussion with Tisha, City Clerk, we, it, it made sense to split this up to make it a cleaner discussion with further commissioners.
So this would be our typical general public comment, correct, Stephen?
Correct.
So two options again before us for the general public comment as far as where it appears in our agenda. Move to the beginning. Or again, we can change it, but that would require a motion or action on one of our commissioners behalf. Hearing none, option one.
Okay, moving on to the next amendment. This is to allow additional public comment with every topic in public hearings. And so similar to the other amendments, if the first option is, requires no action, that's not to add the edit, or the second option requires a motion. And that is to add the edit, to put it into our rules and regulations to identify public comment with each topic discussion in public hearings.
Stephen, this is Tisha. Can I make a clarification here?
Yes, please.
So I, as I understand it, this would, so your, your public hearings or public comment is a required element of your public hearings as, as implied in the title. So that's, that's not going anywhere. You're always going to be taking public comment at your public hearings. But I think that what we wanted to talk to you about here was what I believe has become a bit of a practice to take public comment after each agenda item, irregardless of whether it's a public hearing. And so that is not currently in the PPC's rules of procedure, nor is it being indicated on your agendas currently that there's interspersed public comment opportunities. So this is an opportunity tonight to sort of clarify where and how that public comment is going to occur so that your rules, your agenda, and what's happening at the meeting is all consistent for, at every meeting. So that's what we wanted to bring forward to you tonight. You know, I know Stephen and I do have some thoughts about the, the public, public comment occurring after each agenda item. There's sort of some operational considerations there, given that we have limited time with, with you to provide input on your work plan items and make recommendations. The interspersing of public comment can, can be challenging to facilitate for the chair, for the staff. I, I'd also just like to mention that, you know, as we talked about earlier tonight, we will be providing an ongoing opportunity for members of the public to participate virtually in your meetings and make comments virtually, which I, I'm really excited about that opportunity. But providing those frequent public comment opportunities throughout the meeting does become more challenging when we're managing both people who might be in the room and monitoring people who might be attending virtually. So just wanted to share a little bit of input there and provide a little more context and look forward to hearing your discussion.
Great, thank you, Tisha.
Okay. Would anyone like to comment about allowing additional public comments with every topic in public hearings? Commissioner Lewis.
Thank you, Chair Voice. I, I, I really appreciate the opportunity to be able to discuss this tonight because I think it's pretty fundamental to how we, how we run our agendas and how we engage with the public, which in my opinion is one of the most vital things that we do, second only to advising the council, is being able to give a space for the public to be able to come. When we have really elaborate agendas, I can recognize that it can get very onerous. But it's also, I think, very difficult for members of the public to prepare comments on these large packets and feel that they need to present everything they want to say in a compressed time period. And it's been hugely beneficial, especially when we do our work on Title 18, to be able to have these opportunities for a pause and break and be able to break these things up. I also think it is very important that we actually put it into our rules and regulations. So I'll be very interested to see how everyone else feels. But I think that having more venues for the public to be able to comment on the work we do is, is very important. So I'm a proponent of that and would love to hear what you guys say.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Milligan.
Hi, and I really only have one. I think I was adding my thing because I was trying to get to all panelists. Thank you, Commissioner Nina Milligan here. Thanks, Chair Voice. I have a couple of questions. One, I'll just bundle them up a little bit. One is the word allow. So when it says allow additional public comment with every public hearing, that speaks to me differently than require the public hearing to be open with every topic. And, and then I want to understand more clearly, if we do nothing, no amendment here, then we are going with the opportunity for the public to speak after every topic. The other question has to do with when the agenda is written and how a topic is identified. Sometimes when we've had topics come to us, the agenda has one big title and then there are subtitles underneath it. So at what time is it determined that it is a topic that's broken up? And just for curiosity now, and, and when does that decision get made? Who makes that decision? So the first thing is the difference between allow and require. And the other is what defines the topic. And generally speaking, I'm agreeing with Chair Lewis. I, I like each topic being broken out. It helps us in our deliberations and it helps to control and manage the complexity of the topics for the public. So I'm in favor, but I just want to hear these.
Chair Voice, do you mind if I respond with questions?
No, please go, please go ahead.
And, and then I'll, I'll first respond and then Tisha, if I'm missing anything, please add on. So the, the difference between allow and require is, is staff kind of see it the same. The intent of this is we need to put it into our rules and regulations if that's what we want to have as part of our agendas. The say require makes the assumption that someone wants to speak up for public comment. So it's, it's hard to staff, there's no difference between two. The main thing is we want, whatever the commission wants, we want to recognize that in the rules and regulations. For your second question on decision on agendas, staff make a recommendation based on the topics that are being brought on the agendas. And we discuss that typically with the commission chairs to look at if it makes sense to bundle certain topics based on what type of policy questions we might have for the commissioners, as well as the context of the topics, as well as if it, if it's really heavy, then we really, and, and requires a lot of explanation and detail, then we probably don't want to bundle that with something else and separate it out. But if there isn't a lot of policy question on a particular topic that we're bringing to the commission and there, we don't expect a huge discussion on it, then that's where the staff will make the recommendation that, okay, maybe, maybe we can bundle these items together as it makes sense to kind of talk about them, especially if there's overlap in the type of topics that we're bringing to the commission as well.
Thank you Stephen.
Tisha, did I miss anything?
Uh, you did a great job Stephen. The only thing I'd, I'd clarify, um, Commissioner Milligan is that current, the current. Uh, replacement rules do not provide for this, um, public comment after each. Agenda item. So that would be an amendment that the commissioners could make to, to add that. And so I'm. Sorry if that didn't come through. As I'm looking at the slide, it doesn't appear to have come through. So Stephen, correct me if I'm wrong, but I. Did not see that provision for public comment after each item in the replacement rules.
That's correct. What was presented in the commission's materials doesn't, doesn't reflect this. So this would need to be an amendment to that.
Yeah, and I would, I'd double down on what Stephen said, um, while on the allow versus require, we really are looking for consistency. So where I think it would be advisable to, to put a little discretion in there, but we, the expectation is if the commission. Wanted that comma after each agenda item, that we would aim to, to do that for, for each agenda item and, um. Uh, just for consistency purposes.
Chair Voice here muted.
Thank you Stephen. Thank you Tisha. Uh, Vice Chair Monahan.
Yeah, hey, Matt Monahan here. Uh, my vote would be to keep the things as they are in the rules today, which is have one. Public hearing for all items, um, at the end of, you know, the various questions that we might ask. Um, the reason why I like just having one, I, I hear staff on just operationally, it's going to get really difficult when we have multiple different ways for. The public to participate. Um, and that's a good thing, obviously, but if we have to do that multiple, we're already doing it, you know, at least twice in these meetings, right? With general public comment and then public comment on the public hearing. If we were to do that multiple times, I just can only imagine kind of the. Some of the operational issues that are going to come up and people are going to be cut off when they didn't, we didn't mean to, and I, I don't want that. So I'd like to just try to land that plane twice and not three, four, five times. I also like the idea of being consistent. I understand that the development commission might do things a little bit differently. But if we can fall back into line with the vast majority of the other boards and with the way city council does it. Uh, that's just is much cleaner. Um, and then, you know, on the legal piece, so I hate the procedural due process, having brought a case like this. I would make a meal out of the fact that a commission was doing something different than other commissions. Um, it, it, it just doesn't look good, uh, for anybody. And so I, I'm. I'm fairly strong in my beliefs that we should go, we should, although I recognize why we did it for Title 18 and it sort of made sense. I think now is time to go back to, to first principles and have, you know, one general public comment at the beginning of the meeting and then a. You know, public comment on the public hearing, um, once in a meeting, um, and give the public an opportunity to participate at that time. Thank you.
Thank you Commissioner Monahan. Uh, Commissioner Bader.
Yeah, hi, this is Sarah Bader. Um. I want to preface my comment by saying that this isn't to like discount the value of the public comment because I find them speaking after every topic. Really helpful, but I think in practice, what we have seen happen is that especially when it gets to, you know, nine thirty at night and we're kind of past the end and everybody's tired, that there have been times where. Someone's wanted to make a comment and they've been like, just read my letter, um, you know, because there's a pressure, um, at that point to not, you know, to kind of. Get this over with. Um, so I actually think it's been detrimental in some instances to, um, public who have been there. Um, when they have to wait until that topic is presented. And so for, for that reason, um, I think the, the kind of. One bucket in addition to the general public comment bucket might be the, the way to go.
Thank you Commissioner Bader. Commissioner Milligan.
Thank you Commissioner Nina Milligan here, and thank you Commissioner Monahan. Uh, you bent my ear to the legal side. I, um, uh. Uh, appreciate the, um, consideration that you brought. Uh, and agree with you on a plus one, but I also want to, uh, expand it a little bit and it goes back to my, uh, earlier comment about defining. Uh, what the topic is. And I think that this needs to also. And, and Tisha can, and, um, explain this a little further, it needs to relate to the notice of the public hearing. That goes out to the public to say, we're having a public hearing. It's on this topic. And per topic. We will have. A public hearing. Now, in, in any meeting, you're right, Title 18 has been odd because, um. We've made buckets, but usually we'll have a topic. And we could have more than one public hearing in an evening depending on the notice of the topic. That leads us to hold the public hearing. So I'm, um, I'm thinking that. If I, if I'm correct, so let me know if I'm correct. And then the other is, uh, thank you, uh, Commissioner Monahan. I'm leaning towards the original option. Depend, and it depends on a careful, uh, distinction of what a topic is.
Thank you Commissioner Milligan. Uh, Commissioner Lewis.
Thank you Chair Voice. Um, I appreciate, uh, Matt's comments and I also appreciate that. Uh, the City Clerk and our city staff have looked over and presented us with these options, knowing that we, they are in line and that we're not crossing any legal boundary right now. Uh, since we have a great support staff to be able to give us these options. I, uh. I do think that it's, uh, important that the, 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 the public know when they can comment. And so. Again, to Nina's point of being able to use that word allow, it's not a requirement to be able to. Have in our agenda meetings that people know when they do have an opportunity to speak to kind of cut down confusion is important. So what I'm going to do right now is I'm going to make a motion. Uh, for an amendment for option two as presented to us. And see if, uh. If I have a second.
Do we have a second? All right, hearing. There we go. We got one in the chat. Uh, Nina?
I'm gonna second the, um, motion because then we're still. Discussing before we vote. I want a lot of discussion on, um, Commissioner Lewis's motion.
Yep. All right. So now that we have a motion and it's been second, we can have a discussion. So we can open this back up with staff. And then we can take a final vote and see what exactly, um, we're putting into this. This particular amendment. So again, learning curve with me. So phoning a friend out there, somebody. Where are we going with this? Stephen, are you going to present anything more on this topic?
Chair Voice, I think I'd like to just kind of clarify, uh, what was presented for, so specific to what's on the screen. Um, specific to public hearings and, uh, going to Commissioner Milligan's, uh, comment question. In terms of trying to determine, uh, what was, you know, trying to clarify what was actually the edit going to be. This was specific to the public hearings and so the. Amendment would be to put into our public hearings, splitting up the topics as recommended by staff and working with the chairs. And then allowing multiple public comments as part of the public hearing. What's in the presented materials provided to the commission tonight is that we would consolidate those topics and not split them up. And then have public clarifying questions and then have consolidated public comments on all of it. And then commission would have their deliberation. That's, that's what's listed in terms of order of items, uh, for public hearings. Does that, Commissioner Milligan, does that clarify your comment question?
Um, if I may, and I put Q, may I, Chair Voice? Uh, Commissioner Milligan here. Thank you. Um, so what I'm here, let's, let's talk about a couple of examples that might be helpful here. Because we have been so long in Title 18. Let's say we're going forward and we have a, um. Um, a public hearing on a rezoning. And we have a public hearing on a something else. Please help me some, you know, some other thing, a change in the comp plan. I don't know. Let's say, let's say those, so those would be two different topics. In the agenda and there's nothing that would conflate them. They would remain two different topics and we'd have a public hearing on one and we'd have a public hearing on the other.
Correct.
That is the way that it would be if we do not amend. Right? Okay. Then if the, um, uh, the, uh. The change to the comp plan topic had a lot of subcategories in it. If we leave it the way it is, everybody'd have to speak to the subcategories at one time in the public hearing. But one would hope that back in the docket or wherever it is these things get decided, that these topics are clear. And not a, a complicated, uh, bunch of separate real topics. I think, you know, we're, we're talking about this here. I'm, I'm. Asserting the point that having one public hearing per topic is the way to go. But I think it is very dependent on how the topics are, uh, developed. Uh, because I do want the public to be able to contribute in a meaningful way on a, a package of information that is digestible by, by all of us. So that's, um, if you have further things to say about that, it'd be nice. Thank you.
No, I, I think Commissioner Milligan, you, you clarified it exactly how, how it would be in terms of like how it's presented right now. Uh, if it's a separate public hearing, there would be a separate public comment for that public hearing. If, even if it's a complex topic, but it's one public hearing, there's still only one public comment allowed for that. And that's, that's kind of how it's. Spelled out in the presented, uh, replacement rules.
If I may, uh, jump in Commissioner Voice. So basically, again, this is, this is going to also come down to myself and. And Vice Chair Monahan and staff working to consolidate these topics. Uh, to be able to present. So it'll fall upon us to be able to give and provide. Staff with enough where, where we think we can find topics that meld together and then say, we want to put this out from. A public hearing where, you know, staff will obviously come to us. And then like you just mentioned, that would get one hearing in itself, one opportunity to comment. Doesn't mean if we have a slow night, we can have two different public hearings. But we wouldn't go through subtopic, subtopic, subtopic and continually just let comment, comment, comment. Um, which I think is part of the gripe, at least for myself. Is that. Sound about basically what Commissioner Milligan said a lot more elegantly than I did? Staff?
Chair, yes. Chair Voice, yes. So, um, yes, to, to kind of reiterate what Chair Voice was saying. The intention with staff is to try to make all, any of these topics and public hearings as simple as possible in terms of consolidation. We don't, I mean, it's not beneficial to you and not beneficial to us. To bring such a complex topic that it's difficult for us to discuss in a public hearing. And so to be able to split that up as, as much as we're able to, we, we work as much as we can with the chairs to make that work.
Thank you Stephen. Tisha?
Um, Chair, with your permission, I, you know, we have, we have a, a land use expert with us tonight, um, Anne Marie Soto. I, I was wondering if she might. Have any thoughts on, um, this, the concept of separating these public hearings into topics? There's, there's discretion that's required in that and based on some of the material, material she presented earlier tonight. I'm just, um, Anne Marie. Might you have any? Thoughts with, again, with the chair's willingness?
Please Anne Marie. More information, the better.
Yeah, so you have some flexibility in the way you do it. Um, if the commission wants to allow to separate topics, then you can certainly do that. Um, but ultimately you are merely required by law to have. A public hearing on the overall item. If you want to separate it out because it might be confusing or because you want to get. More into the nitty gritty of a particular topic, you can certainly do that. Um, that is something that you don't necessarily need to decide by. Uh, putting it in your rules of procedure. As we talked about before, you can also have some, you have some flexibility where if there's special, special circumstances. You could announce that for this particular public hearing, we're going to take a testimony. On these specific topics separate from the overall. Uh, the overall topic. So when we're dealing with, for example, all of these buckets for the Title 18 update. You know, you have the, you know, bucket number four, but within bucket number four, there might be, you know, three or four distinct topics within that bucket. So you could say. We're just going to have a public hearing on bu- bucket number four and pretty much anything that's within those buckets is. Uh, available for the public to comment on. Or you can say, we're going to have a public hearing on bucket number four. But specifically we'll take testimony on these specific items, um, separately. So that you can have a little bit more focused discussion on those. You don't need to decide that necessarily by putting it in your rules though. You can decide. That prior to a particular public hearing, that's the way you might want to do it for that, that, um, that item. So that you have a little bit of flexibility. You just want to make sure if that's what you're going to do and it's not in your rules of procedure. That you are communicating that to the public in advance of the public hearing. So that they understand how you're going to be taking testimony. And then at the outset of the public hearing, that particular evening, you would want to again explain. This is the way we're going to be taking public testimony tonight. You know, we, we are separating it out into these separate topics. Um, if you have a general comment, however, that doesn't neatly fit into those topics, you would still want to make sure. That it's, if it's covered under the overall umbrella, that you're still taking top, uh, comment on that item.
Thank you Anne Marie. That was very helpful. Um, you might want to stick around because Commissioner. Uh, Vice Chair Monahan has a question. I don't know who it's directed towards.
Hey, yeah, sorry. This is going to be directed towards Anne Marie. Um, so clarifying question. Okay, let's say there's one overarching topic, bucket four. And within bucket four, we have subtopics A, B, C, and D. And we say we're going to take public hearing on A, B, C, and D. Do we then at the end of D have to have a public hearing for bucket four writ large? Or can we rely just on the public comment for subtopics A, B, C, D?
It's going to depend on how granular you're getting with those buckets. So if your buckets are so specific that it doesn't cover everything that's in, you know, the overall. Bucket number four, um, you wouldn't want to be precluding the public from being able to talk about something. That might not neatly fit into those buckets. So, I mean, it can get a little confusing. When you're doing it that way because you want to make sure that if, if here's the topic, here's the overall topic. And you've got, you know, this little neat part, this little neat part, but something doesn't quite fit within, you know, one of those subparts. What are you, how are you going to make sure that the public still gets an opportunity to comment on it?
Right, yeah, I, I could get even more confusing. You know, we say we're only going to talk about the even number pages. Well, I want to talk about the odd number pages. So, yeah, I, I get it. All of this just leads me to further underscore my, my, my position that having just one. With the flexibility that, look, if everybody at the meeting thinks, hey, breaking this up for this one meeting and we can publicly announce it. That's fine, but yeah, I just, I, I get nervous, particularly like some of members of the public don't necessarily want to confine, you know. If they have a comment on, on, you know, topic D, they don't want to sit through topics A through C. Um, and then only be able to comment on topic D, right? They want to be able to stay it, you know. As, as part of their overarching comment. So thank you for the clarifying question. I appreciate it.
Thank you Vice Chair Monahan. And thank you all of you for your wonderful comments. Um. I kind of saved my mind for my own. I'm, I'm kind of in agreement with Vice Chair Monahan and Commissioner Bader. Um, I, I think like I said, we need to try and rule in a little bit. I understand what we tried to do with Title 18. I like the idea of being able to have one public hearing. And then having the flexibility with proper notice where we can discuss maybe myself and. Uh, Vice Chair Monahan and even reach out to other commissioners where they think, hey, this is an area we need to break up and ask for additional testimony. So I think we get the flexibility that we want with also having a cleaner, more efficient meeting process. Um, so that's where I'm leaning. Commissioner Lewis.
Thank you Chair Voice. Commissioner Joy Lewis, actually I put comment, but kind of more of a question Stephen. Uh, right now we're. Uh, right now, we're, uh, proposing to be able to put it into our rules and regulations in the agenda of how we run things. But, but I'm wondering is if instead, we could put a line in, in section seven? Because I think really what the intent is to allow for there to be discretion to staff and to the chair to be able to have this flexibility. So would we instead be able to add it as a line item in the way that we talk about how the responsibilities of the chair to, to work with staff? Are we able to then instead just use a line item that talks about having the discretion to be able to add additional points and just be able to give that flexibility without necessarily building it into our agenda every single time so that we kind of hit the, um, the intent of how PPC has been running rather than necessarily codifying it right into our agenda meeting minutes? Is, is that an option that we can do?
Commissioner Lucy, actually bringing up a good point. Uh, there is actual, already a line item under the pub- public participation section for section seven that gives the chair the discretion for public comment.
So then I'll follow up. So is there any reason that staff doesn't feel that how we've been operating historically is in contrast to how this is? I guess that's what I was getting is that staff was saying, hey, we want to, we want to give more clarity to that, right? And so being able to then put it into our agenda topics when we present them to the public and we give notice of our meetings, I think we're all in agreement about. But what I'm trying to question is if we're able to just put it in section seven, and if we think that language is already sufficient, then we really don't need to carry forward with a motion. But again, that would be staff saying, hey, we do or don't think that your rules or regulations adhere to how you've been operating.
To respond, I'm gonna phone a colleague. Tisha?
Sure, I'll offer some input. Anne Marie, please feel free to add, add your thoughts too. My, my thought is it would be nice to have a statement in the rules explaining that that might be an option the commission chooses and maybe establishing how that would be decided. Um, I think, I, I just tend to think the, the more transparent we can be and the less discretion about what's done is, is, uh, welcome. And that was really one of the, the points of bringing these rules to you is that they provide a lot more clarity and specificity in a number of situations. So I think that that, um, while I don't think it's necessarily precluded from your rules, I think adding a statement saying that, um, and whether it be at the chair's discretion or a majority of the commission at the outset of the public hearing agrees um, to, um, break the public hearing, uh, comments into topic areas or just maintain flexibility to how the public comment is taken would be a, a good idea.
Are there any more comments or questions? So, uh, Stephen, could you put the, that last slide up, please?
Can you see this slide?
Yes.
Okay.
So we have option one, which is, I believe that is going to be, um, basically what we've discussed. And then option two, which would require a motion for any type of amendment to amendment three.
Well, Chair, we have a motion that's been seconded at this point on option two.
Option two, uh, by Commissioner Lewis? Am I getting that right? Okay. So I've got, um, Commissioner Lewis for comment. Like I said, you guys are going to have to forgive me. This is not my expertise. A little bit of a learning curve. So am I allowed to actually ask for comment even though there's a motion on the floor? Or does this have to be decided? Okay, Commissioner Lewis?
Thank you, Chair Voice. Commissioner Joy Lewis. So I, I'm actually going to make a second motion. We still have to vote on the first mo- motion, um, but I'm actually going to make a second one because I think that we actually have three options in front of us now. So one is option one. One is option two, which has been, which has been motioned. And I'm going to make, um, make a second op, uh, motion to add the language into section seven that says that the chair and staff's discretion, additional public comments may be included in the, in the agenda. And, uh, I'll look and see if I have a second to that, adding that language instead to section seven rather than adding it to our agenda piece. Thanks.
Chair Voice here, muted.
Thank you, Stephen. Is there possibly any way we could get the, um, motions to be written into the chat box? That might be helpful. I've seen that done once or twice.
Uh, just to help make sure this is, uh, clean, Chair Voice, I would actually suggest going through the vote for the first motion and then acting on the second motion from Commissioner Lewis.
Okay, so on the first motion, I believe that was to look at option two. Um, I believe now that we've discussed it, would be, we're going for a vote, correct?
Chair, this is, this is Tisha. Excuse, excuse the interruption. I have a sort of efficient, uh, way to deal with this, which is that, um, Commissioner Lewis could offer this as a substitute amendment to her prior amendment. And then you could ask if there are any objections to substituting. So be swapping out.
I appreciate that, Tisha. Um, Commissioner Lewis, would you like to make a substitution?
Yes, Chair Voice. Commissioner Joy Lewis, I'd very much like to make a substitution to my first motion to the second motion that was stated and I'm typing now. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Is there any objection to, um, to Commissioners Lewis's, uh, preference of substituting? Hearing none.
And, and I'm just gonna chime in because I was the seconder. And I, and I think if I'm remembering rules as the seconder, I have to, um, comment on whether the substitution, I agree with that, which I do, and I did in the comments.
Thank you, Commissioner Milligan. You know what I tried to look for last, was it last weekend? I bought a Roberts Rules book, uh, that I bought when I first got on the commission, and I just got to find it. But yeah, I've got some reading about some of these more legalese approaches, but, uh, all very interesting, all very fascinating.
So then I don't know if you formally seconded the substitute motion, but I'm happy to second if it hasn't been.
You can go ahead and second.
All right, Commissioner Lewis.
Second.
So, and now here's another part. So now that, uh, that has all been agreed to and seconded and non-objected, uh, now we have Commissioner Lewis's, uh, substitution. Commissioner Lewis, would you like to read it aloud?
Thank you, Chair Voice. Commissioner Joy Lewis. The motion before us is, at the chair and staff's discretion, additional public comments may be included in the published agenda topics.
Do we have a second?
Again.
All right, well, we have a second. So now, um, I believe we will take a vote. God help me, that's gotta be right, right? So Stephen, would you like to take the role for the vote?
Yes. All right, so we are gonna take role for this motion. Um, running through Commissioner Milligan.
Aye.
Commissioner Bader?
Aye.
Commissioner Monahan?
Aye.
Commissioner Lewis?
Aye.
Chair Voice?
Aye.
Chair Voice, you have unanimous consent.
Great, thank you, everyone. Um, all right, so I believe, Stephen, we are now moving up past from amendment three and continuing on with, uh, the final three.
Correct. So the final three amendments, uh, came from Commissioner's suggestions that we received. What I'll do is I'll explain each of them and then answer any questions that commissioners may have. I may ask the commissioner who recommended the edits to add on if, I, in, in case I missed anything. Um, so the first amendment is, deals with the section that deal, that focuses on the selection of alternates. And, um, the edit is to change the selection of alternates when a regular member is un- unable to attend by selecting alternate members who arrive earliest to the meeting versus selection by seniority. Giving you all a chance to read through it. And then, so the options for you all tonight is considering not adding the edit, requires no action, or making the edit, um, which requires a motion. And I'll leave the edit on the screen for you all to consider.
Commissioner Lewis?
Thank you, Chair Voice. Commissioner Joy Lewis, I'd like a motion, I'd like to make a motion, uh, to adopt the amendment of option two.
Is there anyone who'd like to second? Commissioner Milligan?
I'm going to second it for the discussion. Thank you, Chair, um, Commissioner Lewis.
All right, we have a motion on the floor. So Stephen, if you'd like to take the roll for a vote?
Uh, first, Chair Voice, you have to, uh, ask for a discussion.
Oh, apologies. Discussion. Um, is there any discussion about the motion? Commissioner Milligan?
Uh, I would allow the, the motion maker to comment first if, uh, she wanted to. Do you want to? Yeah, and let, let Commissioner Lewis go first and I'll go after her.
Okay, please, Commissioner Lewis.
Thank you, Chair Voice. Commissioner Joy Lewis, uh, and thank you to Commissioner, uh, Milligan. I will, uh, I will say that I, uh, I can't speak to, if I was the only one, but I am certainly the, one of the people who reached out to staff, uh, to make a comment on this. Historically, uh, how we run in PPC is to do the alternate who arrives first to the meeting. That obviously is a little harder in a virtual format. Uh, but what it really addresses is issues of equity and transparency. Uh, what we want to make sure that we do is that we have a place where all members feel that they are welcome. And instead of having a hierarchy of who served the longest, uh, we would then be having a person who has decided to arrive is, is traditionally how we, how we've done it. I think it's worked very well, uh, and I think that we can get into some issues right now with trying to talk about who's been on the longest. I will say for the person with their granny glasses on, for, uh, the longest-serving member of PPC right now, we've never actually had an alternate have a second term, um, in our stay. So we, our alternates are often, uh, decide to stay with us for a short period of time. And so this is kind of something that is a little bit moot because we don't tend to have long-serving alternates. Uh, but obviously, in a fully functioning and working commission, that is what we'd like to see. So that is why I suggested them.
Thank you, Commissioner Lewis. Commissioner Milligan?
Thank you. Nina Milligan here. Uh, number one, I want to ask clarification. This, it kind of confuses me a little bit, but this has to do with the selection of alternates. Make sure I'm in the right section of the document during a meeting. And so during a meeting, the selection of an alternate to be, um, let's say upgraded, uh, to a voting member, when we're on the dais, and it's, uh, worked in other commissions before, very elegantly, that when we're looking for our quorum in the room, if an alternate is upgraded to a voting member, they move in a chair. And then the other people who come in sit outside that, and it makes for a very visible, um, meeting management. Um, it makes it obvious who's voting and who's not voting. When we don't do that, when you don't move up a chair in the, um, in the array of, of, um, the quorum on the dais, uh, it can be kind of confusing. So mine is simply, my support is simply for the logistics of the meeting, uh, and, and nothing more complicated than, than that. Thank you.
Great, thank you both commissioners, both excellent points. Would anyone else like to commission, uh, Vice Chair Monahan?
I'm good with this. I agree with Joy's amendment.
Okay, is there anyone else who'd like to discuss this particular, uh, motion? All right, now I believe we're ready for roll call. Uh, staff? Go ahead, please, Tisha.
Hi, Chair. Um, Commissioner Milligan, you brought up a great point, which got me looking, um, in the replacement rules. And I think there's some language in this proposed new section that says if it's known in advance that a regular member will be absent, staff will notify an alternate member in advance of the meeting and request they serve in the absence of the regular member. And then that's where the provision for the alternate be selected based on seniority comes in. Um, so thank you for highlighting that. I'm sharing that, I guess, for the commission's consideration. If you, you, I suppose you could carve out two situations.
So, Tisha, actually, uh, right, when you jumped out, I was about to speak to it. We actually have, uh, additional edit to that section you're speaking of on the, um, notification of alternates. So we'll get to that one next.
Okay, well, thank you. Thank you, staff. Um, any further discussion? All right, if we could please take the roll for a vote.
Okay, Commissioner Bader?
Aye.
Commissioner Milligan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Monahan?
Aye.
Commissioner Lewis?
Aye.
And Chair Voice?
Aye.
The motion passes. Okay, moving on to the next amendment. So, as a great segue on alternates, um, the, there was an additional edit, uh, requested to change the notification so that is, there's more, uh, advanced notification to alternates when it's known in advance when a regular member isn't able to attend, uh, a meeting. So that the language is changed so that all confirmed AT&amp;Ts will be notified of a, uh, regular member's absence and encourage the alternates to, um, prepare in advance for the meeting, um, in the case that they serve as a regular member in the meeting. And so the chair, and then there is additional language where the chair will announce, uh, which alternates will be voting members for the meeting. Um, and that, this will be noted in the minutes. So the options for consideration is no action, which would not add the edit, and then option two, which is to, uh, make a motion to add these edits. And I'll go back to the edits for the commission's consideration.
Is there anyone who'd like to make a motion to add these edits to amendment five? Hearing none. Option one. Up. Commissioner Lewis?
Sorry, Chair Voice. Commissioner Joy Lewis, I wasn't fast enough. I'd like to make a motion uh, on the amendment for option two to adopt the language in front of us, uh, for notica- notification of alternates.
Is there a second to Commissioner Lewis's motion?
Chair Voice here, on you.
Thank you, Stephen. So I don't see a second. Like, like I said, this will be a lot easier when we're on the dais because I can't see everyone all the time. Looks like that ma- motion has failed.
Moving on to the next amendment. And this is our last amendment that we'll be discussing tonight. This one is to amend the language related to member participation. And that was to keep the discussion of members should be relevant to the business spending and removing the concise to the point so that it is more of a open dialogue. And then the options for this is option one, do not edit, which requires no action, or option two, make the edit, which requires a motion. I'll go back to the edit.
Okay, do we have a motion to allow the edits for amendment six? We have a question from Commissioner Lewis.
Thank you Chair Voice. I, the Commissioner Joy Lewis, I will not be making a motion to support this language change. However, I do want to say to staff that what I, what I would like to do is to have the, this commission to have a discussion and a recommendation where we would put effectively the language we've been using as a comment to the whiteboard and to pass along to, to staff and to council that our newest formed board, the, of our equity board, I would love for them to have an item to be able to look at our bylaws. Right now, I feel that we're missing language that is really inclusive to all members of our community. Right now, we want to allow for having people from different walks of life to be able to participant, to be participants in this, in this process and being able to have members of our community that are English as a second language, neurodivergent and elderly. Right now, it's not captured in our bylaws and I think that it would be easy, depending on how the meetings are being run, to be able to use this language to stifle a variety of voices. And so instead, what I think is that it needs to be looked at from our equity board for all commissions and boards to be able to have language that is more up to date. Thank you.
Thank you Commissioner Lewis. Commissioner Milligan has a question.
Uh, yes, I'm sorry, I'm not fast enough to look it up myself in Roberts Rules on my phone. Is concise to the point and is that a quote from Roberts Rules of Order?
You know, I will ask Tisha if she's able to remember the discussion that was had with the Development Commission when they adopted this language.
Commissioner Milligan, I, I have studied Roberts Rules extensively. I can't tell you quickly if that is exact language. I'll, um, but Roberts Rules is about running an efficient meeting while ensuring equal participation by all members. So the informal rules in Roberts Rules, um, for, it's a little complicated, but the recommendation is that members can speak up to 10 minutes on each topic twice during any particular topic. But there are different rules for small boards of 12 members and less, which is exactly what the PPC is. And so in small boards of 12 members and less, there is, Roberts Rules doesn't prescribe any particular timeframe. It just says you should attempt to provide, you know, everyone an opportunity to speak once before anyone speaks the second time. So I think that, I think the board or the commission has discretion to modify this. Roberts Rules does talk a lot about having germane comments. So that word relevant, I think, is important, but the, the rest of the words there, I think, you know, I don't know how meaningful they, or important they really are.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions or comments? Would anyone like to make a motion? All right, I have to go through my screen to make sure I see everybody. Hearing none. Amendment six as presented earlier.
Chair Voice, that concludes all the major amendments that were proposed by Commissioners.
Nothing like trial by fire. So appreciate staff and appreciate our fantastic colleagues on the commission. It didn't look fun, it was. Commissioner Lewis has a comment.
Sorry, I did it again. It's really a question. Stephen, I had had one more thing I had emailed you about, which was Section 13.3 about limiting the use of technology. Was that, was that either stricken or were we gonna talk about it or?
We, so when I discussed the language with Tisha, that, that, your suggestion was actually the intent of the language. It just was poorly worded, so we made the edit. And so because it kept to the intent of what was, what we were trying to do, we didn't feel like we needed to have the discussion with the commission. And for the other Commissioners' benefit of this conversation, at the end of the rules and rules and regulations, there's a section on code of conduct that spoke to accessing the meeting materials via digital devices. And the intent was, we do want the Commissioners to be accessing the materials via digital devices, but we want to limit communications between Commissioners and members with the public via digital devices so that we maintain the transparency of conversations for the commission meetings.
Great, thank you Stephen. All right, if there's no first, further amendments or additional conversation, I believe that leads us to reports. City Council updates.
Hey Jason, I think we have to move, we have to do one more motion and vote.
Okay.
So I, I'll make a motion to adopt the replacement rules considering the discussed amendments.
I can second it. I'll second Milligan.
Thank you Commissioner Milligan. Any further debate or discussion? We'll give it a second here.
And Chair, uh, this is Tisha, just confirming this would be including adopted amendments, which I, I think ultimately there was one. Great.
All right, we'll do roll call for the motion that's on the floor.
Hey, Commissioner Bader.
Aye.
Commissioner Lewis.
Aye.
Commissioner Milligan.
Aye.
Vice Chair Monahan.
Aye.
And Chair Voice.
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right, well, thank you everybody. Yes, the most important one that we had to do and, and it shows, you know, a little bit of a learning curve. So now we get to agenda item number five, reports. So I'd like to ask Minnie or Stephen, but Minnie's not here tonight, so I'd like to ask Stephen, do we have any city council updates?
Just really quick updates. The Planning Council Committee is gonna be considering bucket three from the Title 18 at next week's meeting. Otherwise, and I think we will have an additional update at your meeting next week on kind of how that discussion goes with the council committee. That's it for council updates.
All right, Stephen, do we have any other business or announcements?
I do have one final announcement. The staff receives a resignation from the new member Kelly from the Planning Policy Commission. She received a new job offer that which was a bigger time commitment than she thinks she will be able to, be able to maintain at least her attendance for Commissioners. So she submitted her resignation. So the commission will be operating with five members for a while. We are, have been in discussion with the City Clerk's Office to have a special recruitment process in the fall. And so that's something that we'll be working with the chairs later this year.
Great, thank you Stephen. Yeah, makes it quite difficult. We've got a summer coming up where everybody after two years of pandemic mode probably wants to go out and, and travel. And we still have this heavy weight above us called Title 18. So that means more than what an absence and we're gonna have to start doing some reshuffling. So again, the previous point made, as much advance notice is always appreciated. So when people do have plans this summer, logistically with the few pieces on the board that we have, it's gonna even become more important. All right, I believe that leads to adjournment. So is there any comments, discussion for the good of our order? Well, thank you everyone for being here and we're gonna adjourn at 8:11 PM. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you Tisha and Anne Marie and Valerie and Stephen, oh, and all you guys too.